My name is Trish Carter and I serve Cedarfield as a chaplain. And at midnight on January 1st every year, what phrase is it that you hear more than any other?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Well, the Jewish New Year, otherwise known as Rosh Hashanah, is one of Judaism's high holidays. And it will begin its two-day celebration at sundown tonight. Rosh Hashanah is considered the birthday of the universe for the day that God created Adam and Eve. And it is thought that our actions during Rosh Hashanah have tremendous impact on the rest of the year. So what should we say to someone who is celebrating Rosh Hashanah? Okay, I'm hearing some, I'm hearing alternate responses. We could say Happy Rosh Hashanah. We could say Happy New Year. Or we could say Shana Tova. And I really think we should go for that one. That's my personal preference for us. So let's practice. Shana Tova.
Shana Tova.
Shana Tova. Good year. We'll follow up good year with good news. Who has good news to share? Let's try this again. We'll follow up good year with good news. Who has good news to share?
On October the 24th, I will be married to this patient, good man for 65 years.
Dawn, do you have any good news to share?
My cousin and his wife in Asheville, North Carolina, survived three trees dropping on their house with the roof caving in, and they survived and they're fine. I thank God for that.
My daughter lives in Asheville and she is also fine.
Who else? Good news going what's up?
Our whole family, we were not included, was in Nashville over the weekend for a wedding, which never happened. But they all came out very, very safely.
Good.
They had to rent cars to get home. Because their cars are still there. The bridges are all about.
Anybody else have any other good news? It's wonderful news to know that our family members and friends are safe. Any birthdays this week?
Today?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Any others? We have today?
Monday.
Monday? Yours is Friday?
Monday. Hey, Monday.
Yeah.
Monday.
Monday. So I read an article. Who knows the most popular month to have a baby? September. Believe it or not, September 11th is the most popular and common day to have a baby. Who would have thought of that? A couple people chuckling. Someone said, isn't that about nine months after New Year's? Okay, any other good news? Good news in the back? Hold on.
Good news is I brought my sister from Asheville, North Carolina, where they, you all know about the devastation there. And she's gonna stay here in Cedarfield until she can come back home. And they have no power, no water. They hope to get the power up on Friday. And they don't know about the water because the stations have been destroyed. So they're waiting and hoping to get parts.
Is she here with you right now?
No.
No, okay.
She's in my apartment.
Okay, we look forward to meeting her in Cedarfield. Cedarfield, welcome.
Well, hello fall. October is my favorite month of the year. I think it's because I love nature. Starting in July, I get excited anticipating the fall foliage changing and envisioning the leaves on their branches, painting the sky in bright reds, yellows, and oranges. The other reason I really like October is because many of my fondest memories with my kids happen in October. I remember many Octobers pulling a red radio flyer with the bat wheel squeaking through the Ashland Berry Farm pumpkin patch. We piled as many pumpkins as we possibly could on that wagon, knowing that we had far too many, but also knowing how happy it made our kids feel. October was about sipping hot cider while singing silly songs, apple picking at Carter's Mountain and navigating an umbrella stroller through the apple groves and sampling every type of apple that was in season. Granny Smith's are still my favorite. We love visiting an occasion for the arts and arts and music festival held in Colonial Williamsburg on Duke of Gloucester Street. Then going down the road to Colonial Williamsburg. I remember talking to my kids about how magnificent all the pieces of arts were and then visiting and pretending that we were colonial settlers in the quaint shops in Williamsburg. I'm still working to perfect my British accent. And finally, watching college football games, especially the ones under the stars and the cool nights when there was an autumn nip in the air, huddled close under a stadium blanket. It really didn't matter who won or lost. It was just about me knowing that I was with my little ones and there was no place on earth that they would rather be. I'm sure some of you have similar memories of October. The best part of October is that November and December come next. And there are even more memories that come during those months. Thank you.
Paul Springman, will you please join me on the microphone? We are going to get a spotlight on the team member holiday fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, and good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to start with thanking Frank Miller for giving me the opportunity to co-chair the team member Christmas holiday gift drive this year. What I'd like to do in five minutes or less is to share with you four points today. Number one, I wanted to introduce myself and my co-chair, Pat Sullivan, tell you a little bit about us because we'll be heading up the gift drive this year. I'd like to share just some highlights of the calendar, what's going to happen over the next 60 days or so here in Cedarfield. And being a business guy, you'd be disappointed if I didn't give you some columns and rows and numbers to take home and think about. But you don't have to focus on those today. It's just to sort of give you an overview of what we're thinking about. And lastly, just a thought to take home to ponder, ponder to think about as you prepare to continue your generosity this year in your gift giving. So yeah, first slide, and I just have two. My wife Nancy and I moved to Cedarfield a little bit more than two years ago. And a lot of you know Nancy. She's very, very involved here. She's the chairperson of the Wellness and Leisure Committee. She sits on the Fresh Eyes Committee. She's very active on the Healthcare Committee as still a practicing nurse these days. And I found my way to the Finance Committee and to the Safety Committee. And I like to think that I contributed a little bit to both of those initiatives as well. I had the opportunity to be here at the little open gathering that we had with the new residents a few weeks ago. And I found myself talking to a couple of the new prospective residents about, I was the re-elected person to move to Cedarfield a couple of years ago. But now I wish we would have come a couple of years sooner. We absolutely love it here, as I'm sure the vast majority of you do as well. Pat, if you wouldn't mind standing and just waving to the audience. Pat Sullivan is gonna serve as our co-chair this year. And Pat and her husband Gary appeared a year or so ago. For the newer residents, you might know Pat has been very actively involved in our welcoming committee. She also takes a very active role in our local chapter of FACRA. And Pat and I are both looking forward to working with you over the next 65 days or so. To give you an idea, in October, we are kicking off the plot process about the gift drive today. And in the next couple of weeks, you'll start to see some regular communications from us, most likely on Community Channel 974 over a period of the next several weeks, say from the middle of October till about the end of November. And this will give you some background information on the team member holiday drive, give you a little bit more information as we go down, perhaps some stories from the past and things that have been special not only to our residents, but the team members themselves. I refer to November as sort of the giving month in this slide. Beginning in the first week in November, our slides on Community Channel 974 will tell you where the gift boxes will be located. They'll explain how you can give to the team members through the gift boxes. And they'll lay out the timeline. If you want to make a mental note today, the last day to prepare a holiday gift this year will be Friday, the 29th of November. The reason it's Friday, the 29th of November is that our holiday party to celebrate with our team members is the following Thursday, on December 5th, right in this room. And for those of you that have been residents for a few years, you certainly know what a wonderful gathering it is to celebrate with our team members. And I believe it's from 2:00 to 4:00 that day. And we'll have the opportunity to personally thank them for all that they've done for us over the past year. And in turn, I think they will thank us for our generosity. So those are a couple of dates you might want to make a mental note. Friday, the 29th of November, the last day to give. And the following Thursday, December 5th, would be the day that we actually celebrate in this various room. So here are a few just high-level numbers I want to share with you today. And the first number I want to call to your attention is the number of households that gave gifts last year. 336. If you're a member of the 336 households that participated last year in this gift drive, first and foremost, on behalf of Pinnacle and on behalf of Cedarfield, and especially our team members here at Cedarfield, thank you very, very much for your generosity. The residents here have been continuously generous in this particular gift drive for more than 25 years. It's the one time each year that we actually have the opportunity to financially thank folks for all that they do for us all year round. Now, last year, we had a nominal increase in the amount that we were able to distribute to the team members, resulting in a distribution of about $271,000. And as I said, it was a slight increase over where we were in 2022. That's the good news. The bad news in the $271,000 from last year is that because we were virtually fully staffed last year in 2023 at the end of the year and not using outside agencies to supplement staff, the actual gift to our individual team members was less in 2023 than it was in 2022. So we hope to rectify that this year and increase our giving a little bit to get us to a point where it's more than what we had given to the team members over the last couple of years. Now, if you're a numbers person like I am and you see 271 and a goal of 325, how are we going to do that? That is a big, big increase. Well, here again, if you're a member of that 336 households that did show us generosity last year, a small increase of just 7% or 8% will get us halfway towards that goal. And we're going to focus on the roughly 100 households that did not participate last year and remind them of the importance to participate this year. And hopefully, hopefully, the vast majority of those households will understand why it is important and will help us with their generosity as well. So these are just some numbers to think about today. You'll be hearing more in detail about numbers as we go down the road over the next 60 days or so. And I'm not, in the interest of time, I'm not going to take questions during this session. But Pat and I both will be available after the meeting if you'd like to chat. The thought I would like to leave you with is this. As residents of Cedarfield, we have, we are given the opportunity to support an unbelievable number of worthy causes virtually all year round. And yesterday, I was asked by one of my neighbors, when I told them that I was going to co-chair this initiative this year, why would you ever put yourself through that? Why do you want to stand up in front of people and ask for money? Why do you want to go and spend the time and energy to do that? And I thought about it relatively quickly. And I said, this is the only opportunity, the only cause, the only initiative that I can share in where I know every one of the recipients is right here where I live. And I can see where my money goes. And I know the vast majority of the recipients that are going to be the beneficiaries of our generosity. And we have wonderful causes that are all very worthy that we all participate in. But this is unique because it's personal. It's our gift to our team members and the one chance that we have every year to say thank you. As I said, we'll have more for you as we go further down into October and November. I appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you and look forward to seeing you after the meeting if you do have any questions. Thank you.
Lauren.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Lauren Burnett, the Assistant Living Administrator here at Cedarfield, here to give you an update on the Walk to End Alzheimer's fundraiser that is also going on currently. We are now up to 58% of our goal, which numbers-wise is $14,609, which is a great increase from a month ago, considering we're only halfway through this fundraising campaign. And this number does not take into account the contributions from last night's Oktoberfest that happened here in the Fellowship Hall, as well as the auction that recently ended upstairs. So that number does not even account contributions from that. So I want to thank everyone who has already contributed to the calls and encourage you to continue with generous donations to be able to reach our goal of 25,000. And also as a reminder, the end of this fundraiser will be marked with the walk at the Richmond Chapter, which is taking place at City Stadium this year. So you are more than welcome to bring your families and to really enjoy that day out in the community. If you do wish to arrange for Cedarfield transportation to City Stadium, please get in contact with Katrin, who has sign-ups to reserve a spot on our bus. So just a reminder, looking out in the next month or so. But making great progress towards that end goal. And I want to thank you all for that.
Good afternoon. Happy Town Hall on a Wednesday at 3:19. We're doing it. All right. My name is Emily Adler. I'm the Director of Sales and Marketing here at Cedarfield. I want to welcome first our three newest residents who all joined us in the month of September. That is Mary and Fritz Will. I see Fritz in the back. Hi, Fritz. We have Mary Beliley and Pam Spence. And all three of them joined us just this past month. We are scheduled to have five move-ins this month in October, three in November. And as long as everyone passes the medical and the financial assessments, we'll have five more in December. So that leaves us with three two-bedroom apartments that are currently available, as well as seven one-b bedrooms. But boy, have we been making some progress on these one-b bedrooms. Two, three? Two of the families who are moving in in the month of October will be taking those apartments. And we're very thrilled to have them. Finally, I just wanted to share with you, I hope that some of you have seen the slide about our event happening on October 17th. That is a cider and spice event. So that is, in the two years that I have been here, the first event that we're hosting for people who have never been to Cedarfield. So these are not members of our waitlist and these are not people who have come here before and received information and might still not have put down a deposit. They have never been here. So you can imagine, the stakes are high. We want to impress. So what did we do? We're gonna have some apple cider cocktails and non-alcoholic beverages as well. And then we are bringing the First Stop Doughnut Truck, which is all apple cider doughnuts, local company, who are very excited to come and work with us. And they will be having some doughnuts available for our guests afterwards. But what does this mean for you? So the presentation that we'll be giving is gonna be led by myself and Logan Harden, who is in the back, our sales counselor. That presentation is gonna last maybe about between 30 and 40 minutes, depending on how many questions. And then we want to open up the space to a select number of residents. There's still space available. Please RSVP with Maria Edwards at cfmarketing@pinnacleliving.org. But we wanted to invite current residents to come and join us and be a representative of the community and really just talk about your experiences with these people who, again, have never been here. So if you are interested in participating in that event, that would be from about 4:00 to 5:00 on October 17th, which is a Thursday and my birthday. So if you would like to eat an apple cider doughnut and you may, I guess you can't bring a candle to stick in the doughnut, but I would understand what you're going for when you hand me your doughnut, because I'll eat them all. Anyway, so please just let us know if you're interested in joining us on October 17th. That is all the information I have. Does anyone have any questions? All right, Happy Town Hall.
Guess whose birthday is on October 19? And my birthday twin in the back. So I don't know what our parents were doing, but I don't know. Anyway, good afternoon. My name is Leah Clemens Little. I'm the Director of Nursing for Health Services. And I have a couple of updates to share with you. I always have an update about COVID. One day, my life will be about pendants and headquarters. So we are hosting a COVID vaccine clinic and an overall vaccine clinic on October 14th, right here in the Fellowship Hall. So I'd like you to keep your eyes and ears open and peeled for additional information. And there'll be a slide on 974 with more information on that. But I had a couple of questions about when we were going to be doing our next COVID vaccine. We will have the high-dose flu, a flu zone for those of us that are a little more senior and seasoned this year. I wanted to talk also about independent living and isolating in the most current CDC guidelines. Now, they're only as good as October 2nd at 3:25 because something can change. But as we know it, if you're living in independent living, we're asking that if you're COVID positive, that you isolate or quarantine at home for five days. Five days from the onset of when you started to feel yucky. What's different this year and this month is that the symptoms aren't what they always were. Some people just say, I had a runny nose, you know? And then maybe you feel a little warm and ta-da, now you have COVID. But whatever that symptom may be, if you don't feel well and you test positive, just kind of think back and then count forward five days to protect yourself. And that way, you can give yourself some time to rest. So what we call source control is your mask, meaning you're the source of whatever that virus is, even if it's flu or pneumonia. In this case, we're talking about COVID. If you're having active symptoms, you should wear the N95. It's the one that is really suctioned to your face. So there are times when I see team members and people out in the community, they'll have the N95 on, but they have a surgical mask underneath it. You're breaking the seal with that. So the N95 should be on your face, not on a mask. And if you want a double mask, then you put the surgical mask on top of the N95. So to save yourself all that trouble, if you have an N95, please wear that. So that's day zero to five. After you get past that five days and your symptoms are better, you can switch to a surgical mask, which is the ones we see, you know, on the railings or various places on the counters and desks and things like that that are readily available to you. So you wear those from day six to 10. If you need to come out, you want your meal deliveries, you know, you've stopped that or whatever, what have you, you're just wearing that surgical mask, okay? And then the usual things that I say, you know, cough in your elbow, keep your distance as much as you can and, you know, wash your hands frequently. It's not uncommon for symptoms like a cough to linger. So in that case, you just wear your surgical mask until you feel better. Okay? I did want to point out, this resident reminded me or informed me that her meals ended before her isolation. So we do our best to keep track of the days and times and we communicate as a team. But if you want, just give a call to Dining Services to give them a heads up, like, hey, I want to extend one more day or something like that. We want to make sure you're taken care of. Okay? The other, yes ma'am?
Does spouse have to be quarantined as well?
If the spouse is not symptomatic, what I would say is to wear the surgical mask just because you've been exposed and maybe your symptoms haven't started. Okay? The question was whether or not your spouse should have to isolate or quarantine as well. Any other questions about that? Okay, thanks. The next thing I wanted to share is regarding pendant responses. So many of you know that there's nurses available 24/7, seven days a week. So from 3:00 PM to 7:00 AM, there are nurse supervisors who, if you pull your pendant, we're gonna respond. So what typically we do, what we found out is the majority of the time, somebody was asleep and they bumped it and didn't know. So, she's not good. So rather than coming and rapping on the door, expecting you to climb out of bed, we'll call you first and say, hey, it's Leah. You know, how are you doing? And then you respond and say, I'm fine. Did I hit that pendant? Yes, ma'am, or yes, sir, you did. And then you clear it and go back to sleep. If we call and you don't answer, we're coming. Okay? If you miss the call, call us back. But if you don't answer, somebody's gonna come. If you miss the call and you clear the pendant, we're gonna think, oh, okay, that was an accident. So then now I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna call you and maybe keep trying to call you. But what we found is that if you need help, just don't clear the pendant. Just let us get there because you may not be where you can reach the phone. Okay? And I learned about this past weekend. This is a really big place. So on Saturday, I was all over the place. I am impressed that you all know how to get around. Like, I need some popcorn and breadcrumbs. But it's a pretty big place. So I would ask that you give us time to get there too. Okay? That is, that's, well, one other thing that I learned this weekend is that everyone's pretty busy. But when you're leaving, can you just stop and let the concierge know you're leaving? Because I get a little worried when, you know, there's no motion check. This was a real example. There was no motion check. But then- There was no motion check, but then, you know, the resident wasn't at home when we're trying to call for another reason, but she had gone out and about. But just stop by and let the concierge know that you're gonna be gone for a little while. Any questions about pendant or any go-backs on COVID? Okay, thank you so much. Have a great day. So a quick public service announcement. In years past, on the day that you got a flu shot, and more recently, when you got a COVID shot, we asked that you review your vial of life. Does everybody know what the vial of life is? It's in your refrigerator, that's where we suggest that you keep it. We ask you to review it, usually more than annually, but if you haven't looked at it in a while, please pull that out of your refrigerator and make sure that it's up to date with your contact numbers. Sometimes, you know, next of kin, they move, they change their phone numbers. We wanna make sure that we have the most accurate information on file. So typically, we suggest that when you get your flu shot, you make sure that that's up to date. So if you wouldn't mind doing that, we would greatly appreciate it. Next is Brittany.
Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Brittany Ingram Atkins, and I am the Healthcare Administrator here at Cedarfield. So, we are officially 31 days into residents being able to use their Medicare Part A benefits on Poppy Place and Healthcare. Yes, please do that. So far, we have had six residents on Poppy Place to use these benefits. Our total healthcare census as of right now is 47. I personally would like to extend a huge shout-out and a huge thank-you to my team in Healthcare, because none of this would have been possible without them. We are truly successful as a team, and they have put a lot of time and effort into making sure that this was a smooth transition for us. A long one, 18 months plus, maybe for those of us that were keeping track, but successful nonetheless. So, thank you all for that.
Next up is James Hicks. If you haven't met James, he is our new Environmental Service, no, Director of Environment Engineering and Maintenance. He usually moves a little bit faster than he's moving right now.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay? No, for sure? 'Cause I heard people say if they can't hear me, they're gonna leave. Everybody leaving. All right, so I'm James Hicks, the head of Facilities, Maintenance, Engineering, everyone who calls us. We love to get phone calls about things that are broken. Get us something to do. The things that I wanted to share with you today are just, you know, a few things that are over and above a little bit. I continue to get people to ask about the pond. What's going with the pond? What's happening with the beavers? And I've been here about a month, so I've made a few phone calls and had a few vendors stop out and give me the skinny on what's going on. So the pond is a little above level right now, because the beavers have made their way in to make a dam, which is what they do. And so it's about 18 inches to 24 inches too high. So I've looked at a couple of companies come in to bring the water down, which means cleaning this spillway, and that just really involves so many coming in and cleaning that area under the bridge. Once we isolate the problem there and we get the water down to a manageable level, we'll be able to do a little bit more with the edging, cleaning the trees up, and making sure that the edges are clean and cleared, free of debris, which then will lead us to the next step, potentially for further beautification, so we can see the pond from maybe the road or perhaps the clubhouse, or even enjoying it a little bit more from the trail itself. We, to date, I guess since I've been here about a month, have not caught any beavers, but the traps are out. And I received a call this morning from the vendor, they're called Nice, N-I-C-E, and they said, "Nope, none are in there. We don't have any little furry friends for you." So before Scott left today, I went in to run out to see if he saw any activity, and we did not. So that's pretty much it on the pond. I'll ask at the end if you have any questions, or I'll stay after to apply to you with any additional questions. The other thing is signage, exterior signage. It's pretty ugly, but we've got things in a row to get it all replaced, and the only thing we're lacking are the things to hang 'em on. The posts are not here yet, but they're supposed to be here this month, so I would think within the next two weeks, you're gonna see a lot of activity. So hopefully, you know where you live, you don't have to read the signs, because they may be down one day, and then the next day, you'll be up. So we're excited about those being put in. The third thing on the list is EV chargers. EV standing for electrical vehicle, electric vehicle? Who in here has one? One, two, three, four, maybe? Excellent. So the charger that we put in has two spaces. It's located over at D-Wing, next to the generator, you've probably just seen it. And the interface is quite simple. If you have electric vehicle, you probably know how to use it, 'cause you've had the charger before. So it's pretty intuitive, but if there are questions regarding that software or how the interface works, please contact me directly or Jack Johnson, and we'll help walk you through them. The rates that have been published are $3 an hour. And the kicker is, if you're sitting there after your car's been charged, it's $5 an hour. So we encourage you, since it's only two spaces, that when the car's charged and the phone tells you it's charged, please expedite the movement of that car so the next person can come in and use those chargers. Does that make sense? All right. Moving right along, Jack Johnson, who you know and love, is on vacation through Monday. So John and I and the team have been really enjoying a quiet office. Don't tell him I sat down. But my phone has not been quiet, and the reason I bring that up is because his phones are forwarded to me. So every time someone calls Jack, James answers the phone, and they, "That's not who I called." So I'm getting sometimes five, six, seven, eight calls a day that are just pushed to Jack, and I always ask that individual, "Have you contacted Darlene? Have you put a work order in?" And sometimes it's yes, and sometimes it's one of those that needs to be escalated a little bit. So I'm not saying don't call me, I'm just saying make sure that we follow the system, which is grab Darlene or call, you know, 8806, and make sure that those requests are in there. And of course, you can always call her back and say, "Hey, I put this request in yesterday, two weeks ago. Can you give me a status on it?" And she should be able to tell you that. So if you're not getting what you want on a that step, that's when I would probably step in. But I encourage you, make sure that you call the 8806 or use the app, the Cedarfield app is amazing. I use it all the time. And that will help expedite getting your task, not only in the system, but completed in the process that we've set up. Lastly, I'm just glad to be here. Thank you so much for the welcome that I've gotten since I've been here. I've really enjoyed so far getting to know everybody, even those of you that have problems, issues. I don't mind, 'cause I like to use my brain, and every day is a little different here. So again, thank you so much, and if you need me, I'll be here afterwards. Oh, question?
I'd like to know what's going on with James River. Our hedges have not been turned back for over two months. Our brass is not getting cut. What's the problem?
I have spoken to him, Matt is the rub, and he and I drive the campus every week and try to make sure that everything's being done in the timely manner. And I did ask that very question about the pruning, and he had said that they're sliding, but I guess, I hate to say this, next week, that's what he told me this week, the next week, the pruning will begin. And I'll talk to you offline about the rolling, I wasn't aware that that's not happening. Anything else that's pertinent to the group? No? All right, well, thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Neil Stoyer, Director of Dining. I had about 10 conversations about Christmas today. Are the holidays here? Rosh Hashanah, Happy New Year, by the way, is already here, and Team Steve, Team Henry, Team now Seth, we'll introduce Seth in just a moment. Our calendars are loaded, and we are happy to serve, but I will tell you right now, take the long way. There's so many events, so much good food that's gonna be happening. Take the long way. Take a few more steps and enjoy. I have a cafe services update. We are right there with Grab and Dough. And now that we have a full management team, again, we'll be able to concentrate on some of the things that we would like to do for you and for our team members down in the cafe. Destination Dining, we'll talk about that a little bit. Everybody enjoying New Orleans? Who's trying New Orleans so far? Enjoyed it? Liddell and Team, they are having a good time. I had a pork dish yesterday, it was wonderful. Who came for Oktoberfest yesterday? Who had more than one Oktoberfest beverage? We ran out of paper. We were writing down who was having what, and it was an amazing event. We served over 160. The meeting is getting a little bit long, so I, is there somebody new here that we should introduce? Everybody? Our new friend, our new partner with dining, Seth Goldston, is coming, making his way up front here, and he'd like to say hi to you all. So here he comes. Seth comes from us by way of Avery Point. He's worked at the Jefferson Hotel, a lot of different restaurant groups, and things in town, and we are so excited that he is here. And we have just said, "Okay, you've been here three days, now fix everything." Now do it. Anyway, everybody give it up for Seth.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Seth Goldston. Like I was introduced, I came from Avery Point, and I saw an opportunity online to come here, and I heard great things about everybody that lives here. I had some folks that worked with me over there that said, "Everybody that lives here is great, everybody that works here is great." And I said, "Well, I wanna be great with them." So I made the move over here, and here I am, and I'm very excited to get started and get things going and get to meet everybody. Really, if I see anybody in the hallway, please introduce yourself. It'll take me a while to get your names, but I promise I'll get 'em. When I came on, this Destination Dining is a new thing, which is pretty great, kind of mix things up and keeps a little variety in our lives, a little spice to life. I don't know if it's supposed to spill the beans, but I think next month, we're going to Greece.
Where are we going?
We're going to Greece. Some fresh orzo and aged sea and seafood and different types of fish, bronzini and fun stuff, so I look forward to sort of putting that out, and really, I'm just excited to be here. Well, thank you, everybody, for having me and welcoming me. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth, because having me in the kitchen, you all don't want that. Okay, well, that's, does anybody have any questions at this time?
Hi, I'm Caitlin Seiler. I'm the Associate Executive Director, and I have a couple of updates from resident life and wellness. For our Cultivate Coordinator search, we have narrowed it down to the last four interviews, and then we will be moving into the second interview phase, which will include resident interviews as soon as next week. So more news to come there, but it's good to see progress, and hopefully, we'll have that Cultivate Coordinator very soon. The other thing I wanted to, yes, ma'am?
Could you tell us what a Cultivate Coordinator is?
A master gardener.
So our Cultivate Coordinator position will be filled with, by somebody who has gardening experience, either somebody who's been a master gardener, has a degree in architecture, environmental architecture, or has had experience working long-term in that field of landscaping. We've had unbelievable response to that position. I was so excited to meet with Katrin yesterday and find out that four of the camp, she's narrowed down from eight to four, and even the four that she's excluded were wonderful. So looking forward to seeing what the residents think and what Katrin finally decides on moving forward with that position. Yes, ma'am? Yeah, this will be working in the same, similar capacity to what Beth Burrell worked in before she retired.
Thank you, Amy. All right, my next thing is for mail. If you are receiving mail that is not addressed to you, please bring it to concierge. Do not write on it. Don't try sending it back. Just bring it to concierge, they will take care of it. So if you've gotten any mail that does not have your name on it or your address on it, then just bring it up to concierge, okay? Thank you.
Just a quick reminder of a few things. First of all, We Care Connect, thank you all for continuing to respond to your We Care Connect surveys. It really helps me and the team address issues that you might be experiencing before others experience the same thing. So please continue to follow up when you get those phone calls, text messages, or emails. Next, the streetlight update is that unfortunately, we learned from the county, I guess about three weeks ago, that evidently, the person who was in charge of putting in the bolts which secure the streetlight, and the manufacturer who created the post that holds the streetlight clearly didn't get together, because the bolts and the holes don't align. So they are working on that. The latest update we had is that definitely by the end of this month, the call that I will make later this week will remind the county that we are a polling station for a fairly big election coming in November, and that we want it to be safe for all of our residents and people visiting the campus by that time. So more to come on the streetlight. Our Park View refresh, many of you might notice that the Park View foyer or entrance area is a different color than it was a few weeks ago. The Fresh Eyes Committee has been working with a decorator for the last few months, and furniture has been ordered and actually was due to come in on Thursday of this week, and then we found out the furniture was in Ickory, North Carolina. So we've been told that it'll be the following week because of the storm, but please keep your eye out for some changes that are happening there. The committee worked really hard on those selections, and I think everyone will be pleased with them. And finally, just wanted to share that over the next few days, you will see a few boxes placed for collections for hurricane victims in North Carolina. Typically, we put those boxes in the mailroom as well as close to the Park View entrance. We are working with a local organization that's doing the drive for them. Also, keep in mind that we, as Pinnacle Living, are working closely with the retirement community in Asheville by the name of Dio Field, who was unfortunately impacted by the storm, and horrifically, they're still trying to locate 20 team members who they haven't been able to contact yet, and we continue to pray for them. We're hoping that, you know, because the phone lines are being down and people leaving in advance, that that's the reason, but we're working very closely with that community. Many of us know the executive director, the CEO, who works there, because she used to work at Westminster Canterbury here in Richmond. So more to come on that, and of course, if there's anything we can do for those residents or those team members, we will support them in any way that we can. Any questions for me? Yes, ma'am?
What kinds of contributions does the organization want?
So we haven't heard directly from the organization yet, because they haven't put together that list, but as soon as we do, we'll let you know. We're working with just a charity that's collecting things like blankets, socks, non-perishable items, and a list of the items that they're looking for will be put on that box so that you can refer to that before going to a store like Walmart or Target and picking up things. Thank you for asking. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to, oh, yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
I didn't come to make a speech, but I'm gonna make one anyway. I wanna comment on two of our presentations today. You probably guessed what the first one on my mind is, the Alzheimer's fund. I'm concerned that, I think, Amy, we're running a little behind. I see they haven't updated the thermometer, but I need everyone in this room to remind your friends how important this campaign is. We all have a tendency to forget, forget to that age, but we really, Amy, need to make that goal of 25,000. You know, it just touches my heart. Remember last year, I challenged David Wanda to give till you feel good? And don't forget that, give till you feel good. I think it would be a shame on the people here at Cedarfield if we don't make that goal. The second one, I never met- The second one, I never met Paul, but I enjoyed his presentation on employee fund. That's the second thing we need to concentrate on. He made one comment that stuck in my mind. We see where our money goes, you know, that fund. I don't think, Amy, in the ten years I've been here, I've seen us have a better staff of employees. And these employers work hard for us in the dining room, everywhere. This is our one time in the year to thank them and to tip them. They are working for us. I think we ought to help Paul make that hundred percent goal. We can do it. It's gonna help us. So I just, makes me feel good just to challenge everybody to see if we can put some extra emphasis in these ten funds.
Thank you. We have another question from the back through, Mr. Law.
Many of you know my wife just passed away from Alzheimer's. So I am here to meet the twenty-five thousand dollar goal. And I hope that it will be a challenge for the rest of you. I will give twenty-five thousand dollars a day.
Thank you. Okay, Neil.
Wow, thank you, David. That's incredible. Thank you, and thank you, Bill, too. Last year, uh, he did a similar donation. So, and thank you to residents. I mean, and I think the reason why we all signed up here, I heard this today, is to be part of an incredible family and, and you all are. So thank you and it's a pleasure being with service. Uh, to, uh, wrap, wrap up the meeting a little bit, it's so exciting to talk about our, our mission. Our mission moment. I mean, everybody knows our mission, right? Enriching lives. Life's journey, enriching life's journey, maybe I am one. But with, with that, uh, we, we have two incredible team members who really, uh, provided next level, uh, mission here. Um, since the June of twenty-eighteen, which was since the pandemic, since countless events and countless hours of service, your dining manager, he's sitting back there, Steve Geisling, has been there for residents and all of us team members. Yesterday's Oktoberfest event, this week's Destination Dining to New Orleans are just like saying, huh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday to Steve and, and his team. A recent event occurred in the dining room. It wasn't a regular day. Nurses, ambulances, and the funeral home needed to be called to our dining room. Quick actions by Steve and his team showed the greatest attention to dignity and respect for Ms. Jean. Our nursing staff provided incredible comfort. They were right there from start to finish. I mean, they were right there when, when things occurred. This was no easy feat. Steve and Leslie, uh, provided comfort and support to the team during meal service, doing quick check-ins with them and discussing additional Cedarfield resources they could access if needed. Today, it's Wednesday. Once again, Steve, Steve and his team and nursing, Leslie and nursing are here and ready to take care of you. Please join me in celebrating this mission moment with Steve Geisling and with Leslie Hansen.
So Leslie couldn't be here today. Just quickly on Leslie, Leslie is a brand-new nurse. She was with us one week when she walked into the situation in the dining room, which was truly an extraordinary event. Leslie's kindness and compassion and professionalism all shined through as she dealt with this extremely difficult situation. I was so impressed with her understanding of our residents, but even more impressed as quickly that she learned our culture and how we deal with things like this. I'm grateful to have both Leslie and Steve on our team and thank you both for what you do every day for our residents and our community. Thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Miller. Frank Miller will now give us the, um, council report.
Thank you. I figure I have five minutes from August, five minutes from September, and five minutes from today, but I'll make it shorter. Uh, I just want to tell you about some changes that we have been able to make this year with regard to the thirteen committees in the Residents Council, which are Communications, Dining, Environmental, Facilities, Finance, Flower and Dior, Gardening, Health Services, Library, Religious Life, Safety, Welcome, and Welcome and Leisure. What we've done this year is we have the same committees, we've had the same fantastic people. And we have, uh, just to give you an idea, we have engineers, property managers, captains, doctors, communications specialists, master gardeners, librarians, and marketing specialists, marketing specialists, and I've probably forgotten a bunch. The other thing they have that is different is every one of the committees has someone from administration that comes to each of the meetings and Amy comes to most of the meetings. And by doing that, what we have been able to do is to take care of issues that come to the committees almost immediately, that there's somebody there that says, yes, I can take care of that. Yes, I'll get that taken care of. And it has really, really worked well. Uh, yesterday, or Monday, I gave a list of the committees and the contact people to all of the area reps. So if you have something that you think maybe is a long-term need, not having your seat unstopped or whatever, then take it to, get the whole area rep, give it to your area rep, and they now know how to give it to the committee chair. And there are some really, as I just said, good people on those committees and administration that can take care of those issues, uh, some of which make it a little longer like the suggestion that was made that included the Residents Council, uh, last month, or, yeah, last month, to, uh, improve the communication with the garden to the Eva State Projects. So keep that in mind and I will tell you a little more as we go on on the next few meetings about what some of the committees are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you all for joining us today. Thank you for being with us and being part of this wonderful community. And the directors will stick around in case you have any other questions for us. Have a great day.